All right, folks, I got six o'clock. Six o'clock. Healthiest. Please drive.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for sending your son to sacrificial lamb for us, especially this time of year, and let us focus upon it as we celebrate Easter. Dear Heavenly Father, please have each council member keep you in mind as we do the city's business and make sure that we're always looking at the citizens' best interests in mind. Amen.
Amen.
I'm three-year-old participation. There is an item on the agenda that you would see him, he's twelve months old. Unless it is a, of this closing period, and I will call for those who are not. Also, please sign through the document so we can have a good meeting if you get a call from these cases. All right, I'm four, so we set the agenda. A is action regarding minutes of March 1st. B is action regarding maintenance number one to some sort of facility, engineering, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Any comments, questions on the consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. Will we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second.
Mayor approach them second. Please cast your vote.
We're ready, Keith.
Thank you. Let the record reflect the deal of form in the full house. Item five, consideration acts regarding stormwater facility making agreements with TMDCR of Texas. For that, Salvador is out. What does that say?
Good to see you all, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. So, just a refresher, the last council meeting, we brought forward a plat and a site plan. The site plan was approved for Belt Mill Villas. Today, we have the plat following this item. We mentioned that we needed a stormwater maintenance agreement to get that forward, so we have that in front of you today. The agreement is between two landowners and is just to maintain some stormwater facilities.
Counsel, question for Salvador.
Is that the right agenda item?
He mentioned six, but we're talking about five now. Sort of. Stormwater is five.
Yes, my apologies. This is just the stormwater maintenance agreement between the two landowners.
This is one, there's no financial impact to the city, right?
Correct. This would all be on the private landowner.
Questions, counsel? If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second. I'll just want to talk for a second. Please cast your vote. Thank you, sir. All right, moving forward to item number six. Consideration act regarding recommendation of planning zoning commission for final plat eighteen point five two acres out of block A lot one, Belt Mill Villas. You got Salvador again, don't worry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, this is the plat that we had tabled at the previous council meeting for Belt Mill Villas. I have JBI and Taylor Mortensen here to speak a little bit more on that and answer any questions.
Counsel, questions for the developer? You want to speak first? Do you have anything to present?
No, I'm Daniel Dewey with JBI Partners. We're the engineer on the project, and yeah, we were just getting signatures to get the maintenance agreement recorded, so that's why we tabled last time. So now that we got that executed and through, that's why we're here with the plat today.
But let's recall, last time we approved the PD, the plan development, site plan, sorry, through the site plan last week, so this time we're doing the final plat. Just so for our historical review. Counsel, what questions do you have?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
No questions?
No questions? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the planning and zoning commission on the final plat for the eighteen point five three two acres out of block A lot one as presented.
I'll second. Please cast your vote. Item seven, action regarding, third action regarding individual project over with Kimley Horn and Associates for the Highland Station Park pedestrian bridge concept design. Randy News from Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is a long-time request from the residents over in Highland Station. When it was built over there, when Highland Station was constructed, the developer left several, every street that had a, backed up to the park over there, left park access easements through there, and most of them, they developed with their sidewalks into the park, with the exceptions of a few, and one being Topeka, and I'm pretty sure I know why it's because it comes out and it has to cross the drainage ditch. And for many years, we've had residents calling and inquiring to why we can't get a bridge there, and it's just due to cost and funding. Park Board approached me and asked me to look into it now that we've got the park bond fund money coming up, and so we contacted Kimley Horn to look into it. They went over to the site, looked at it, and then they realized it's not just a simple bridge, it's going to have to have some engineering and some work into it, so that is, that is the request from the Park Board. They, we took it to them, they approved it, and now it's coming to y'all for your approval, for the IPO.
I got a question. So, I went over it. One, this is in the long time coming, so I one-hundred percent support something to go across the creek, but it doesn't have to go. I walked it this morning, I've seen it before, because I live in that neighborhood. If you go over there and you walk it today, there's a gentleman there, lives there, he mows that, and they've actually put, you come down that open, you make a right, they've actually taken rocks and built a walkway to go across the creek, okay? You don't have to go across that cupboard. You could go out there and make a right, go down and follow the same thing they did, put a low-water crossing in, serve the same, same purpose with a lot less money.
I think, you know, that's kind of what we're looking into designing here, so I think this is probably poorly named, it should be a preliminary design, because as you indicated, we're trying to be diligent and make sure that y'all are going to spend your money wisely, the park bond money wisely. I remember there being a tree.
Yep, it's right to the left, yep.
Yeah, and it's eroding pretty poorly, and both sides of the ditches there look pretty bad. That was something Laura and I were thinking we need to look at, besides just adding in a crossing, so completely agree with you that, you know, we're not just looking at cutting straight across, we need to do what makes the most sense dollars-wise. Do what? Yeah, and we've made sure to get enough survey north and south of that culvert to make sure we have information to look at.
Okay, I just, I mean, I looked at the, like I said, again, I one-hundred percent support this, want to see it put in, but again, we don't need to buy a Maserati here, we need Toyota Corolla.
Yeah, and like I said, I think the, it sounds like the word conceptual is kind of catching some ice here with the amount of dollars, but no money will be wasted on this. If we're able to design this with the survey, then you're basically just getting a step ahead, and so the final design will be cheaper.
Okay, so I did read the whole conceptual, it's eighteen thousand dollars for a conceptual design that has a bunch of things it don't include, and the way I read it, as being an engineer, that no really, no real engineering, it was just a conceptual design. Here's what it could look like if we did do it. So, and plus, there was five thousand dollars for three meetings, which seem, again, a little excessive.
Yeah. The design will be performed, that's the intention of the project, so we're going to make sure everything can be ADA compliant and that the bridge has been coordinated and feasible. As far as the meeting tasks, yeah, there's four meetings in there, including a kickoff meeting. I know, you know, we've been trying to be more intentional, coordinating with council, Parks Board, Gabe, Public Works. So I think, you know, if it's...
It behooves us to have, have those meetings, have inter, we're trying to have community feedback and things, it's absolutely a good idea. You have, we have to do that, we owe that to folks, so yes, it costs some money, but that's worth doing business.
So, just for clarity, when this conceptual design, when we come out of that, will have a, how much more will have to go in for that, the design of that cross, that whole thing? I mean...
I mean, it'll depend obviously on which design we go with, but I think you could think of this as getting us to about a fifty percent design, and then from there, you would, you would go from fifty or sixty percent to final design.
And well, we have options coming out of this, so is it just going to be one conception? Or you can go this way, and it's going to cost you kind of roughly?
I don't think we would want to fully design multiple options. That wouldn't be cost efficient, but I think upfront, Laura does a great job of looking at a couple of different options, getting that in front of Brack and Randy, and then going from there.
Yeah, I was thinking for budget, it'd be something like a ROM estimate.
We hear from you.
Yes, sorry.
You're the expert in the room.
So, part of it will be talking with, oh, I'm Laura Presley from Kimley Horn, landscape architect. Part of it will be coordinating with manufacturers like Contec, Permatrek, and they will also be able to help us identify what product is going to be the most cost-effective, and based on that, where is it going to be located? And then we'll also have the topographic survey information that'll help us establish, you know, is the height variation between the east side and west side going to be a factor at this point, more than at this point, and that kind of thing, because going out there in person, you can tell there's a bigger vertical difference right at the outfall, and it feels like less the further away you get, but it might not actually be less, because it's just less steep, but it's still...
So, part of the, this five thousand dollars for these four meetings, are y'all going to make sure that you talk to the citizens on both sides and make sure that they're very happy with this design?
So, the meetings are, one with city staff that's kickoff, one with city staff to review, and then there will be a Parks Board meeting, as well as a city council meeting to garner feedback from y'all, as well as from citizens that participate in the process. This also includes one revision, so we'll present a concept, and then if there's feedback from y'all, from citizens, Parks Board, city staff, we'll be able to incorporate that into kind of a final preliminary concept.
Got you. So that, and so we'd end up with a fifty percent design coming out of this? So that's more than the way I read into the document, the way it was written?
Yes, it wouldn't be like a formal construction document, fifty percent, but it would be that level of thought.
Yeah, and would there be any dollar amounts in there at the end? So if you went with option A versus option B, and are we talking about a ROM estimate, a rough order of magnitude?
We're talking about an opinion of probable construction cost, so I think it would be more detailed than a rough order of magnitude, in my mind.
Okay, cool. All questions, again.
Counsel, other questions? Any?
Do we have an idea, just ballpark, not to hold your feet to the fire type of thing, estimate of what this cost might be, you know, quarter of a million dollars, fifty thousand dollars?
Don't feel pressured to answer that. We really don't. That, that was kind of what prompted this question, honestly, was Brack was asking that, and with how much this design could change, if you're right at the culvert or north of it, we really don't. That, and that's why we kind of asked Randy, we're like, could we please get survey and actually design this, because we're just going to fall on our face if we throw a number out there based on, because these bridges can get much more expensive based on the design and the type. I mean, we're not, I think Laura, at the Parks Board meeting, had said, we're not looking to spend all four million, that we can guarantee that.
I mean, if you go into that park, in the middle of the park where it crosses the creek there, there's a low-water crossing. A low-water crossing is where you take a couple of cupboards, you put through, you put concrete over them, and that's what I'm envisioning, not some big huge hundred or two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar, you know, state-of-the-art concept bridge.
Right.
Yes, if that's something that we can provide in a way that is ADA compliant...
Why does it have to be ADA compliant? Because we've already got two other entrances coming into the park, not every entrance has to be ADA compliant.
That's something that I can look into?
Well, please do, because when you go into a building, not every entrance going upstairs has to be ADA, the stairs aren't, you just have to have an elevator.
That makes sense for buildings. My understanding of the, like, TLDR, TDLR, sorry, review, is that anything with a construction cost over fifty thousand dollars that's a pedestrian improvement has to pass the ADA standards for...
Let's do it in stages and keep it under fifty thousand then.
Why don't we just do it right and do it ADA compliant?
Right and ADA compliant ain't necessarily one and the same thing.
All new construction, we want it to be ADA. We've done a lot of revisions and a lot of reviews around the city, and we're not, because it was built years ago, and that's okay, but new construction, we want to be smart and be as compliant as we can for our citizens that are less mobile. I don't have an issue with...
It all depends on the cost. I mean, so if we're going to say one versus, I'd really like, I mean, like, again, if I can get it built for seventy-five thousand, non-ADA compliant, but you're coming back and telling me it's going to cost a million ADA compliant, then it's a very easy decision for me to make that we got other entrances that we can use. Now, I'm not saying that, let's look at the price, but it's, you know, I, I don't want to say we're all in, it absolutely has to be, unless the make and come back and show me the law. That's just me, I'm just one of the seven on here, but...
Other questions, come here.
Well, like I said, I think it's important for it to be ADA compliant, you never know which residents may need that at that location, and people move in and out, and people might be visiting people. I think, you know, all of the entrances to the park should be ADA compliant, so that anybody and everybody who either lives there or is visiting won't have to go out of their way to some other entrance because of their wheelchair, whatever. So I'm, I'm in favor of making everything ADA compliant from here on out, on in.
Counsel, other questions? Yes, any? Go ahead.
I guess you're talking about the little hammer, the red hammer in the middle of this drawing, is the area...
That is the space we're looking at, yes. That's not the limits of survey, our survey limits are greater than that, but just to...
But this is the area that you're looking at placing the bridge. So, it looks like it has a pretty long pathway between the two houses, and then it looks like a pretty wide creek area. Is this bridge going to connect to that walkway?
Yes, on the opposite side.
On the other side of the creek?
That would be the goal.
And then it's going to also connect to the sidewalks in the residential side as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because if you're going to go through all that trouble.
Yeah.
Counsel, other questions?
So, if we approve this, what are we, what are we getting? I mean, are we going to get, I just want to make sure I understand what, because I'm one-hundred percent for putting something in, I just want to make sure that at the end I get, we get what we're, eighteen thousand we're paying for, so I'm, in my mind, we're going to get a couple of different options, and we'll get a, somewhere similar to a ROM estimate of cost ADA versus non-ADA for each one of them. Is that correct?
So, this IPO is for a concept that we would likely review with staff to garner their feedback. That concept would be similar to what you've seen us provide, I think, on other projects, where it's an aerial with plan view imagery of the proposed kind of route, and then reference imagery of what the improvement would look like, based on past projects, imagery that we have from providers, and then costs associated with that, and we would take that to staff and garner their feedback on the cost, if this is something that's too expensive to anything, and then from there, we would bring that to Parks Board, council, garner feedback, and adjust. So, this includes the concept and a round of revisions for it, and so well as for the cost estimate.
And I'd say what you're really getting is information, I mean, so the result of this is going to be, do, does the Park Board want to set aside a certain amount of money to build this bridge? So, I think instead of just setting that money aside preliminarily, and then it ends up not being feasible or not cost-effective, if we go ahead and do this early design, upfront design, then you're able to make that decision without wasting money.
I just want to make sure that we get a, here's what it costs if one-way versus, like I said, I'm just afraid it's going to come back with a big, huge, South Lake-level bridge across through there, and it's going to be cost prohibitive, so I want to make sure that we get multiple options, so that we can make that call.
I don't think Randy would let us get by with that, so I'm confident that we'll deliver.
Other questions for Laura?
Number one, Laura. What do you expect the life expectancy of the bridge to be? What is your, your initial plan? Ten years, twenty-five years?
Never been, I don't know. I'm not sure. We can ask the suppliers that, I've never been asked.
Yes, I think it would vary depending on supplier, type of crossing, and so that's information that we can provide with the concept, but it's not information that I have right now. We would be looking for something that was a long lifespan to make it worthwhile, we wouldn't want to propose anything that was going to be short-lived.
And what would you consider short-lived?
Like, if you did a low-water crossing made out of wood, more like you would see in swamps, I could see something like that, having a lot of maintenance, maybe a lower lifespan, but typically, like, what you're kind of referring to with the culverts, with a concrete crossing like we see in Willow Creek Park, I mean, I think those are going to last probably till doomsday, so something like that would have a good lifespan, concrete.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking, I think it's thirty to fifty years.
Other questions, counsel? Thank you, Laura.
Thank you all.
All right, so I have three folks that want to speak, citizens who want to speak on this issue. First is Jeff Knight.
All right, counsel, thanks for having us, mayor. I'm Jeff Knight, I'm actually the, my wife here is Candace Faith Knight, she goes by Faith. We're the ones that mow that section, and we built that little stone walkway going across, because we have seen kids get injured going across that concrete erosion control system there. So, I, Mr. Lawson, I agree with you. I do believe it needs to be cost-effective. As much as I would love to have a Golden Gate Bridge built right there, it doesn't need to be anything like that. It's, my only concern, where I feel it's necessary to have an ADA access, because we do have disabled people in our neighborhood that don't use the park because of that crossing. My mother-in-law, who lives with us, is one of them. My kids will cross the creek, across that stone crossing, and she'll have to get in her vehicle and drive around to the park and meet them. It, it almost takes away from living on the park when you can't get to the park. I have a video, if, if, Count, Mr. Mayor, if you would like me to present it.
If it's brief, sure.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can make, we can probably fast-forward a little bit, I think it's like a minute and a half long, but it's a drone video I took to show...
Do you have that, Keith?
What's it called?
It has the word drone in it somewhere.
Drone? Yes, sir. After the drone?
The rest of the videos are all interviews from our neighbors, all in support of a bridge. It's kind of redundant, but if you did ever want to look at it, you could.
Yeah, that, that area needs a bridge, because it's a big walk-around. I agree with that.
So, one of the big concerns is, it's not just access to the park, but when these two schools let out, the kids flood across that creek on our side of the, as you can see, okay, so now we're coming from the school, and you would go down these sidewalks, and if you look off to the right, you see that one sidewalk that goes off to the right in that neighborhood, they have a little, I believe it's a concrete bridge right there. They're able to get to, get to and from the park. But us, we live on the top side of this video here, and the creek goes across parallel with the top of the TV screen up there. We're not able to get across without using that stone crossing, but as you can see, they have a concrete-type bridge. Now, the creek is much smaller right here, but they are able to access the park.
When was that bridge put in, Randy, do you know?
When the park was built.
I'm just curious, if it was added to or done?
Which direction does the water flow in that creek?
From right to left, and this one from bottom to the top. There's two creeks that come together right there.
There's your little rock.
Yes, so this is the stone we built, that's our house right there with the pool with the white. That stone is what we put down to help the kids cross. Believe it or not, it is easier to cross that stone than it is that concrete erosion control. The algae forms on that, it's very, very slick. My wife has treated many injuries right here. We keep a first aid kit close by. Now, if you, now if you don't, if you can't cross right here, your other option is, the only other option there is, is to go all the way around, and you'll see that it's quite a trek to go all the way around. And you'll also see in the video that there are, I don't know how many houses, there's a lot of homes with kids that are unable to use the park. They could use the park if they walked all the way around, but they just choose not to, because it's not convenient.
That would be easier.
This is the path we have to take to get to the park from our house if you don't cross the creek.
Yeah, it's quite a trek. I didn't track how, how far, but I walked it today. It's, it's a pretty good little...
It's a pretty good, all your time to get there.
You don't want to play once you get there.
You don't want to do that necessary exercise. So, here's, the other problem that we have is, so we, we almost made it all the way around. You'll see, that, that's a trek to get across, and also show the ring built, but the other problem is, the lawn maintenance for the park, they're not even to mow our side of the fence, our side of the creek, and I just thought maybe it wasn't in the budget, so we started mowing ourselves, you can kind of see right by my little spot there.
Yeah, you mow, you mow down, and you mow all the way down to the, to the...
Try to make a walkway for the kids, right? But the problem is the snakes and the rats. That grass is that tall, and our, all of our homes, everybody on that side of the fence on Topeka Drive, we all are infested with snakes and rats. It's horrible. Everything you put, my griddle out back, I got a clean droppings off of it and disinfect it every time I want to use it, and it's just very...
Does it get mowed under our contract?
It does.
It does?
It's actually referred to as hill hill over there, because it is, like you said, you have to know, they, they weed.
Because they can't get by there.
And, and sometimes they can get by with, when the creek's dry, but they found a little spot to get across. So my, my request is, is we have a bridge put in, obviously, ADA compliant, and big enough for a lawnmower to get across.
Well, a lawnmower's not as big as, well, I guess...
Yeah, well, I mean, if it doesn't have to have rails, the wings can just hang off the side a little bit, as long as the wheels are, and tires are on the bridge, right?
So, the reason they're not mowing it is because they don't want to drive around and come in on the other side?
There's no way to, we built a little temporary road over there down the block, right? Put that back to the north from where you built that, I don't know if y'all seen, we brought the, cleared all that stuff around on the north side of that hill over there, brought the...
Yes, sir.
I could, I could back my truck through that.
It's a slope, we can, but they can mow part of it with the, then you get to the slopes where they have to get out and weed.
Okay, got you. I, I didn't, yeah, but you could mow between the two houses, you could get to...
Between the houses, we, my neighbor and I, we take care of that, it's no problem.
Keith, back that up a little bit. Where is the, this T, this red T that's on this thing, where is that in that picture?
Can I make it from there?
No, you can't see mine. Oh.
Okay, if you're looking at that concrete erosion on the right side of the display, that's the T.
Yes, you did, just go straight back. Yeah, see that, yeah, see that?
This is the ring that's wired out to the...
Well, is there room enough now to go through? Yeah, that's drainage.
I do have...
No. I'm trying to get this here.
Okay, so I do have another video, if you had time, we will be able to show that too, or you, I just make sure you get that.
Why don't you send it to us? Would you do that, sir? Or send it to Keith? We can...
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So one, one other, I, I got a question. Would, do you see any issue with us coming out there, making that right and putting a low-water crossing right there where you currently have the rock going across?
No, sir. I, I'm all for trying to save money.
Okay, good.
Wanna hear from Candace now, Ms. Knight?
Hey, I'm Candace Knight. I live at 1244 Topeka Drive. To answer that question that you had for him, if you don't mind, I don't see a problem with it. I will see that it may cost more because it's such a slope. You can't just put a path on the side of that hill. It really wouldn't be ADA compliant. They would have to cut in and maybe make a wall so that the sidewalk can be flat. I wouldn't mind a bridge further down that way if it costs less. As long as we have a bridge, I, I don't care. I really don't care how it is. So you seen, and he has some samples of interviews, you know, that he can send to all of you. My main concern is the safety. You know, we have a lot of residents in that area with young children. They go, they travel to and from school every day through that drainage path, is what I call it. I've seen a lot of them fall because we do live right there on the side of it. I hang out in the backyard a lot. We, we frequent the park a lot. So I've had to render aid to many minors that come through that have fallen on that. To myself and, and him as well, my husband as well, and our two young boys, they've fallen many times on it. So, you know, it's kind of a, a safety concern for us. And then also with the grass and the, the snakes as well, to reiterate what he had. We've taken many interviews from residents in that area, from Topeka Drive, from Katy Drive, Grand Central Court, and from that side of Grand Central. And we haven't found anyone that isn't begging, you know, to have that put in or anyone that hasn't said, you know, I, I've fallen, whatever, you know, everyone's fallen on it. So, but that's all I have. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question for you. And maybe you or your husband could answer this. How high does the water get in that creek when it rains?
Well, we've actually seen it. It's, it's over his head whenever.
It roars.
It flows through. Not often, but whenever we have a big flood come in, the park actually goes underwater a pretty good bit.
I'm not, it's, it's hard to tell when you're looking down on something, but I believe maybe six, four more feet. And it, whatever is built there will have, if it's going to have to endure the roaring water, it's gonna have to be built very strong or, and, and very large culverts put in.
All the more reason to do a good study and see what we get.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much.
And does the rainwater ever get into your backyard?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so you're up high enough?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Brack St. Clair.
Brack St. Clair, 421 Creek Terrace. They really covered everything very well. I just kinda put my name in cause I figured I'd need to speak on this, just in case. But if y'all have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I wanna hear from a parks board perspective. You bring that perspective.
So eighteen thousand dollars of the bond, right?
Yes, sir.
Whatever, whatever the cost be, when we prove it, we come out of the bond as well, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Were there any concerns raised at the, the Parks Board meeting about this?
There were, there were several. The cost of, the eighteen thousand came up. Not knowing what the final cost was gonna be was, was a, a bit of a concern. Hit everything? I, I think that was mainly it. There, there really is zero opposition to putting this in. I think everybody agrees that this needs to happen. It should've happened when the developer developed it. The developer should've paid for it and put it in. And I think it just kinda reiterates the stance that we as citizens and you as council members need to take when developers come in, that some of these features need to be built into it and they, they need to follow through and they need to put this in. Features that are like this. We don't, we don't need to let it go and then twenty years later come in and go, alright, well, the city needs to now pay for this and when the developer should've originally done it. So, anyway, that's.
Any other questions for Brack?
Yeah, the, you mentioned that it's coming out of the bond, but this says it's coming out of the Parks Donation Fund.
I think the eighteen thousand is coming out of the. The Parks Donation Fund. But the, the intent is for the, the final number, whatever it is, to use it as a, a part of the, that use the bond money to pay for the, the actual installation and.
And how does that fit into our Parks comprehensive, comprehensive plan?
So, that's a good question.
You don't have to answer it today if you don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer. I, I do know that this affects, I believe it's fifty-two homes. So there's fifty-two homes in the circle to the north side of, or the east side of that.
Well, what the Park Comprehensive Plan says is they want to increase trails and access to the trails and this absolutely does that. So to me, this absolutely fits into the Parks Comprehensive Plan.
Any questions for Brack? Thanks, sir. You said.
Do we have a, I don't remember, I probably forgot it. What's the date on, we think this, this analysis would be complete?
So lead times for survey right now are six to eight weeks, depending on field crews. So that puts us at the end of May for having data back. So I would say end of June, potentially middle of July, depending on survey, we'll be able to have some preliminary information to start reviewing with staff and all of the council and Parks Board.
Good.
And one thing going forward, let's not call this a bridge. It's a crossing. We don't know what it's gonna end up in. It's, it's a low-water crossing. Let's talk about that. That sounds better than a bridge.
Sounds good.
People get a little excited when you say bridge. I've, I've been, I've been through that and I don't wanna go again, so.
We could build a miniature replica.
We do have a really nice bridge.
Alright, so any other questions, comments, council?
Yeah, one final, one final comment. I know Paul and I have both noticed over at Willow Creek Park, that low-water crossing is starting to crumble and fall apart. You know, I don't even know how old that bridge is, excuse me, crossing is. Forgive me. But again, you know, that was one of the questions why I was, you know, concerned about the longevity, especially with the amount of water flowing over this thing. Cause that, like I said, that crossing started to, big chunks of it are falling off.
The one just off the map, Roy, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Randy's asked us to plan on taking a look at those. The balance that you're kinda mentioning is, do you spend more money upfront to get it out of the ten-year, fifty-year, hundred-year storm, but then you're building bridges everywhere? Or do you build it a, a lower crossing that has to endure the frequent flooding? Where, like she said, we're having fifty-year storms every year, so.
But if it lasts thirty years?
Yeah.
You know?
So we're, we'll help balance that.
Our council, any other questions on item seven? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the conceptual design for the Highland Station Park entrance.
Second.
Cindy St. Cast your votes.
We can't see any of that screen.
Just raise your hand.
We don't have this screen or that screen, Keith, so I don't know.
Got that one. You're one of three. They're all green. Oh, Mary.
Mary, you vote? Pointy.
I think we all voted for it.
Cast your vote. You got it? Okay, motion passed. Thank y'all.
That was a nice presentation, too. Thank you.
Very nice.
We're worried about eighteen thousand dollars, okay?
Alright, item number eight, consideration action regarding ordinance number 2023-13, residential carport specific use permit fee adjustment. It's far too.
Thank you, mayor and council.
If you recall, the last couple of meetings, we've had discussions on residential carports and the specific use permit that's required. So taking what we staff received to be hints of consideration from city council and the P&amp;Z Commission, which CBO Little went and presented at regarding the carports, staff's making a recommendation to reduce the specific use permit fee for the residential carports, reducing it from seven fifty, which all SUPs, that's charged for all SUPs today, to half at three hundred and seventy-five. Staff believes that will still cover the cost of staff time and the notices that are required for a specific use permit.
So does the, is the three seventy-five what it used to be before we went and increased it this last time, or?
So looking back, without taking a lot of time, it appears that SUPs were a hundred dollars in sometime between 2010 and 2014. That was increased to seven fifty. And I don't know the history of that, but since 2014, it's been seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, before we went and changed the, to got rid of the special zoning areas, what did it cost a citizen to apply for a carport?
In the carport overlay district, they could build one without a permit. That was a specific area of town.
Okay.
So the desire was to increase that to citywide and to have some kinda oversight to do that. That's how.
So before it was free, now, now it's, okay, gotcha.
It was free in some areas.
And it was illegal in others.
Correct.
Very small, very small area of the city.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So SUPs, they generally apply to businesses, not residential areas?
I think it applies across the board. I, I wouldn't be the one to answer that, but SUPs are probably predominantly for commercial.
Yeah, SUPs are for any use that's conditional, in other words, not permitted.
Right.
But it can apply to residential or commercial or industrial management.
But primarily, it's not residential, primarily?
Primarily, that's right. That's because residential's somewhat.
So that's why I was wondering if, you know, what do the other cities charge for their permits for carports?
I'd be the wrong person to answer that. I don't know, maybe CBO Little, if we did search.
There's some over two fifty, some are off of the square footage. There's, I think I surveyed ten and I don't think any one of them is seven. There was one that was nine hundred, but it was in an SUP. One of the local cities is just, it's an SUP, but it only requires sending the paper for two weeks. So they're didn't stop applying the right ways they handle SUPs.
So, so Kim, didn't we go over a lot of the funding here last year and we readjusted it to be in line?
This was, this wasn't one of the ones that was adjusted. No, sir. I mean, you wanna keep in mind, it requires an adverti, legal advertising. And so the little thing that we put in for the budget, mid-year budget adjustment is like four hundred, four hundred dollars. So we wanna at least, I think, capture the cost of what it costs us to advertise the SUP.
We also want citizens to have a little bit of a, to think about it, not just file one, you know, have a thought-out process and that sort of forces them to put something out on paper. So that's part of our, our plan.
Well, and I understand that, but I would like, you know, whoever's working with the residents to make it very clear what, what their three hundred and seventy-five dollars is covering. So it's not an expense to the city. I think that communication is gonna be extremely important.
Good. Council, other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number 2023-13, the carport, for the carport specific use permit. Let's prove it. In it.
Second?
Please cast your votes.
Motion passed. Thank y'all. Item number nine, consideration action regarding resident 2023-08 Saginaw Home Improvement Program Amendment. Our chief, Doug Spears.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Kinda following that same philosophy, staff taking guidance and consideration from city council. Staff is recommending revising the program, the Saginaw Home Improvement Program, commonly referred to as SHIP, to be available citywide. Currently, it's restricted to the Rancho North subdivision, Rancho North Edition, actually. So staff is recommending making that program available citywide.
Council, questions for the chief? I'm assuming part of the reason is because it's been pretty popular?
We've had a lot of inquiries. There's an application in process. It happens to be in the Rancho North Edition, but there is an application in process. It looks like it's gonna be successful.
We have inquiries from other parts of town as well, from folks that live in different.
Larry.
Okay. Do we have the budget for this?
And what's our budget for that program this year? What's our budget for the program this year?
Twelve, twelve thousand five hundred in general fund, twelve thousand five hundred in enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, council?
Just, I, I think it's, it's a good program if it's sturdied right and I think it's definitely worth, you know.
Staff's anxious to get one under the belt and going and we'll have some feedback from that one process and hopefully be a little more educated about it on the other end of it.
I'm glad people are interested.
Sir?
I'm glad people are interested.
Yes.
I wanna make a positive improvement. Other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-08.
I'll second that.
Mayor, approach him second. Please cast your vote. Motion passed. Thank you, chief. Good work. Item number ten at 646, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding resident 2023-09, fiscal year 2022-23, mid-year budget for fiscal, for that. Finance director, Kim Quinn.
Thank you, mayor and city council. We customarily make amendments to the budget two times a year, once mid-year and once, one at year-end. We amend the budget in the same manner in which we adopt the budget. So it requires a public hearing. We've advertised the public hearing as required. Normally, the mid-year budget adjustments are primarily projects that weren't completed at the end of last fiscal year. So we're amending the budget to make sure that we have the funds for that in the current fiscal year. And then the other items are items that you've, that the city council has approved since October 1st and we're adjusting the budget for those things that have been added. The attachment goes line by line and details every amendment that's proposed and I'll, you have it to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, questions for Kim?
She already answered my questions. I would like to take Kim a very good report and appreciate your reply back, so.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So I think we're all just sort of scrolling through the list. It's a good list of things and most of them, a lot of them are just, and we've already approved and they're just being carried forward because they weren't finished. So. Go ahead.
I believe I'm right in saying this is more of a housekeeping.
Yes, ma'am. The funding is, the funding is there. It was approved, so the, for the items that are carried forward, it was approved last year in the budget. It wasn't spent last year, so it falls to fund balance and we're just re-appropriating it. We're just rebudgeting the balance of what we need to finish the project. That or the items that y'all have approved that weren't part of the budget and we've identified a funding source, usually it's fund balance, and those are the items then that we're budgeting in the line item.
One that I'm interested in and also excited about is reimbursement from our friends at the county. We know when that's gonna happen? Any ideas?
I think Lee's the one coordinating that. I know we've got some in process, the first two quarters in process.
That's correct. I'm expecting to go to commissioners' court sometime soon for the first quarter of the Knowles.
For the two, the two point seven, two point seven million?
Yes.
Nice. Good to get that back? That would be very nice. But if folks don't know, just to explain, and that's why I brought that up, it's a big number. This was approved, the Knowles product was approved with the bond two years ago in 2021. This was approved, the Knowles product was approved of the bond two years ago in 2021. Also as well, there was a county bond that passed on transportation, and we put the Knowles product on that. We were approved, so basically the county split that road with us 50/50. We, we built it first, and they reimbursed us. So, this is our first payment of 2.7 million dollars. So we said, this much for the bond, Saginaw bond, it's not going to be this much as the county's helping us, because it all come from some of the sustained taxpayers. It does, but I don't want the money to go to Saginaw instead of Lake Worth. I love Lake Worth, but I want the money to stay here in Saginaw. So we're going to get a nice bit of money from Knowles, and I think we're going to ask for money for other projects as well, just those are TBD in the future. So, we jumped in, in line early with Knowles project, and I'm glad we did, get in front of the other cities and before the money runs out. So, that's 2.7 million dollars that our taxpayers do not have to fund.
How is that grant money going to affect our tax rate?
The grant money won't affect the tax rate. What you'll end up doing is you'll have the bond funds for road improvements, you can either not issue the full amount, or you can use it for other road projects.
So if we don't issue it, that would help the tax rate?
That's correct.
We haven't issued all the bond funds yet. We should whatever. Counsel, any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, so anyone can speak on this at this time. You don't have to fill up form, come on up. You've got questions on this, make your budget review, we would happy to, to answer your questions, or if you want to see more details, we'll be happy to send you the, the full report and take a look at it. I think it's going to be on our website, right?
It was attached to the agenda item, so it's available for the public.
It's currently on the website, okay. So, and I shouldn't have doubted that. Kim's always two steps ahead of me, so.
That's why she has all those prizes, I mean, awards on the wall right there.
She's lining them up.
That's right.
Any other questions, Council? If they want to speak, then at 652, take us out of public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2023-09 on the, as presented on the mid-year budget.
Mr. Tucker, seconds. Please cast your vote. Motion passed. Thank you, Kim.
Great work.
Last item, item number 11, water and wastewater, public works, parks, granted to environmental departments, salaries, staffing budget, and general overre discussion. For that, Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll give y'all a, kind of a brief overview of everything, and then I've got some employees that'll step up and kind of get down in the weeds and answer some questions from y'all, if you have any, and kind of give y'all a little more detail about their daily operations and how they, they run the department, so.
Do you have a presentation?
Who's going first?
I'll go first.
All right.
So, I'll go over the departments right quick and kind of give you a, a little overview of kind of what some of the things that are included in each department as far as budgets. First is the water and wastewater department, now, number one department. I consider it the cash register. It, it has annual operating budget of 13,193 dollars, 40, 193 and 40 dollars. There are 20 budgeted positions in, in the salaries cover, with four of those vacant at this time, and have been for a while. It's in the water operations side. Overtime, uniforms, office supplies, water system maintenance and supplies, wastewater system maintenance and supplies, meters, water meters and supplies, contract services, billings, dues, subscriptions, educational training, engineering, meter reading, cellular, power of the pumps, water service from Fort Worth, wastewater service from Fort Worth, water testing, wastewater testing, and of course, capital projects. That's just a few. There's, there's quite a few line items in the water and wastewater, in the department. Public services. Public services has an op, annual operating budget of 2,168,510 dollars. There are 11 budgeted positions in that department. They're covered in that salaries line item, with two of those are vacant currently. It also has overtime, uniform supplies, building maintenance and repairs, sidewalk replacement, street maintenance and supplies, sign supplies, street light, signal, uh, signal lock repairs, contract services, mowing, contract services, inspections, educational training, utilities. Again, another note on that, we haven't added any new employees to the public works department in over 10 years, 10-plus years, so. Fleet maintenance, they operate at an annual budget of 750,545 dollars. That's two employees that maintain all the equipment, police, fire, public works, everybody. Those guys stay very, very busy there.
Because when the fire truck breaks down, we don't take it to a dealership.
Nope.
We got it ourselves.
I think, I think the chief is, is proud of that fact. I know his budget is. Ground utility funding, environmental, that's an annual budget of 2,740,125, salaries, uniforms, supplies, disposal cost, educational training, permit fees, and capital outlay. That department has four employees. Parks department, this is probably one of the most overlooked departments that I, that I oversee. We have over 101 acres of, of parks, seven parks that are developed parks. They have an annual budget of 454,620 dollars with two employees. That's, that's all that's in the parks department. We do supplement, that's kind of where we take the hit, when those guys get overwhelmed or, you know, if somebody's off sick or something, we have to pull from, from public services to go fill the void, get things done, so. They feel that it's, it's a hard thing to maintain. Street maintenance fund, which is our annual budget of 1,550,000 dollars, which covers all the residential street repairs, industrial street repairs, sidewalk repla, replacement, street maintenance and supplies, and any capital outlay projects that we might have. I think one of our problems right now for, for public works and for citywide, all departments mainly right now is, is the competition for talent. We, we advertise, you know, we put out job postings, and we don't get very many qualified applicants. I think we're competing with other cities, well, I know we are, especially in water and wastewater. Everybody's kind of in the same boat, and I think right now that probably is the time that it, it might be good for us to start looking at maybe doing a salary study, salary compensation study, and see if, if we're all, you know, are, are each, each position is, is, is being paid correctly for current pay scales, or, or online with everybody else, and determine the market value of, of each job. I, I know we haven't done one in 2017, and I, I think it's, it's recommended that you do them every three years, just to set, just to say that we're, we're online with, with everybody else, so.
How many vacancies do you have right now?
I have four in water, two in public service.
You have six total?
Six total.
How long you've had those vacancies?
Uh, the water positions.
We haven't had a full period since 2018.
The positions have been open for over a year. I've, I've had applications out.
Really?
For over a year.
Wow.
And even if certain departments are fully staffed, they may very well be understaffed.
That's true.
So, it's not just our positions filled, it's, do we need more positions? And we do in many cases.
Yes.
And how many more positions do you think you need? And you don't have to answer that tonight.
You know, we always could use, the parks department, like I said, is, is probably the most understaffed department that we have, and you're trying to keep a level of, of service to those parks, but you're having to rob other employees to come in to fill in a gap. You know, I think, you know, you, I could call around and, and check, but I would be willing to bet that most cities that have parks our size probably have six to eight employees in that department.
That, that's what it'd really be nice to see, you know, okay, we got two in the parks department. I don't know how many square acres we have here that you guys are, huh?
101 acres.
101 acres, plus the other things. Yeah, that would be very nice to see, you know, and for us to be able to have, you know, what's, what's other cities doing? What, what does it take to maintain that property?
Absolutely.
Keith?
Just to give you an idea, when Randy was talking about how it's the most not looked at department, park department, in my department, from 2004 to 2011 or '12, still had the same number of park acres, and at that time, in 2004, we had two employees. They still have two employees.
And we've added a lot more work, the switch yard and food truck park, and it takes, somebody's got to empty the trash and everything.
We don't have any interns for that?
No.
Sounds like, I mean, our first priority is to fill your vacancies.
That's number one.
That's number one. That's six vacancies, that would help. That would certainly help, so we need to talk about that, absolutely.
So the park, the water department, have you reached out to TCCs? Because I know that a person about five years ago worked with TCC and set up a, a program there, and they actually have a program where you can actually, they work you through, and you can actually get your D and, and even more towards your C license.
Yeah, they, they have training courses out there that you can go take, and.
Yeah.
And mostly, it's, it's for continued education credit classes, and, and city employees from all around go out there and take their, their course.
But I mean, you can take, say, if we wanted to, and I, I know a person who can talk to you, because I know the person who set that up. They actually even did it at Lamar High School for a while, and when they, by the time they graduated high school, they were actually ready to take the, the license, and, and that's what they, this person also helped TCC actually set that up.
We have the, the, high school gave the.
Yeah, we, we went, see Glenn, Melanie, myself, we went to visit the Hollenstein Center, so we're going to try to get as many as we can of the Hollenstein.
Yeah.
Students to come and work for the summer, so.
Good.
Not our, I guess our first year public works had two, they had that up and out of meter replacements and everything.
Yes.
But last year, I don't think that we had anybody who was interested in public work, so. Yeah, we're, we're going to try to get some high school kids over the summer.
Didn't, didn't one year we had a kid that worked for us over the summer, and then we hired him, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's, what, maybe the first year we hit the?
First year. Yeah, first year, yeah, he stayed about a year.
Is there a job, Hollenstein's having jobs here in the city?
I mean, my thing is, if we can sell it as, hey, you know, come work with us over the summer, hey, also work with TCC, you can start working on getting this license. Show it to them that it could actually be a career. I mean, because this can be, I mean, you know, that'd be good, because you definitely can start from the ground and work your way up. I, I know that, in general, that program at TCC was set up.
With the, your parks employees, do they take care of the grounds around the city buildings as well, or?
Contractor does that. Contractors.
Notice, pretty much every one of our city facilities needs, needs some attention.
You're, you're gonna, you're, I, my contractor, a new contractor started yesterday. So far, they've done outstanding job. They, they mowed Willow Creek Park in one day, and so they're, they're, they're making a showing, so hopefully when they hit the city facilities, which will be probably all tomorrow?
Probably tomorrow, they, they mowed Saginaw Main, and they mowed Longport today, they finished up what the, we, the work they needed, that's on Willets Creek. But tomorrow, I imagine, we said that we're going to head to the public, Lee's Creek, so you call.
So we'll start seeing if they can handle what they say they can handle.
I was proud they were with the law cabin today, and they swept up the leaves, could have blown them on my way. I was very thankful for that.
So we're short four resources in water and wastewater, and you were short two resources in fleet maintenance?
In, in public works.
Oh, public works, I wrote in fleet maintenance. Is that, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Except for somebody in the park.
So with the cost.
You don't have anybody in the parks, do you?
We've just got, I'm not short, I just don't have two, two employees in that, yes.
Yes.
Other than the parks department, do you feel, if you got these other resources filled, do you feel that your department is staffed adequately?
I think it's worth looking at, I think our water department's probably insufficient, but maybe one, two possibly. Public works, obviously, they're, I guess, and they're going to get in, into the numbers with y'all here in a minute, I don't want to steal all their stuff, but basically, it boils down to you have six, six public works guys that are, are doing the public work stuff.
Yeah, I was looking at your fleet maintenance budget with everything that they have to purchase to keep the vehicles running. It seems kind of low, especially with the cost of gasoline, keeps going up and up and up. Tires are difficult to find, you know, I went to buy tires last year and wasn't able to find four tires at one store for my car, and I'm sure it's more difficult with the specialized equipment that you have, parts and things like that. I mean, is your 750,000 dollars enough in your budget to cover those things?
Jeff is, is, he's always made it work. He tries to run a tight budget every year, and, and he, he hardly sends things out. I mean, he just, he does it all in-house, so really, you, go ahead.
Just since we're on the fleet maintenance topic, I preach this in our staff meetings, fleet maintenance saves us an incredible amount of money, being able to do everything in-house. Not only that, but for fire trucks and police cars, the downtime is what's critical, so being able to drive it down the road and get it back in a day or two, sometimes in hours versus weeks or months, that, you can't put a price on that, so my recommendation is for us to really look at the fleet department. I know Mr. Mayhew is probably approaching retirement, and his knowledge needs to be passed on to another person, because at the point that we can't do all the maintenance in-house that we're currently doing, that will have a tremendous cost impact and an out-of-service impact. So I couldn't, I can't preach that enough.
Are we reaching out to Hollenstein to bring in students to learn these responsibilities? I mean, Botec seems to be out of the schools. These are some excellent skills that people need to learn, a lot cheaper than having to pay college tuition. Yes, what?
Yeah, we've, we've met with Hollenstein Center, and like I say, we want to get as many students as possible. It's a great idea.
Anything else for?
At this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over unless y'all have any other questions. I'll turn it over to Matt Regan, he's my environmental manager, Paul Rzinski, the utilities manager, and Corey Smith, who's my public works superintendent. They'll all come up. I'm still waiting on that. Eric? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Randy said, I'm Matt Regan, I'm the environmental and drainage manager, and I'm going to try to keep you here for less than three hours. General overview of the environmental department, we're responsible for the following programs, implementing and managing the city's MS4 apartment, which is issued by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. We handle all the.
Do you know what that is? I don't know what that is.
The, the TCQ is the state regulation, or the state regulator, which is the equivalent to the EPA. So the EPA tells the state what to do, who tells us what to do. Do we need to go more? I can go more in depth, but, you know. All right, I'll just try to make it quick. We, we also manage all the stormwater, which includes performing erosion control inspections on construction sites and inspecting outfalls for illicit discharges. An illicit discharge is defined as anything other than rainwater. So if it's cloudy water, muddy water, if it's got a sheen on it, whether it's a petroleum sheen or a pollen-type sheen, we go out there and we look, and we make sure that it is, you know, safe. or a pollen-type sheen, we go out there and we look and we make sure that it is, you know, safe. We also do industrial pretreatment, which covers our high water and sewer use customers. We do cross connection and backflow for all water connections, which includes backflow testing and cross connection inspections. The testing itself, we don't do. Each individual person with the backflow assembly is required to have it tested by a third party. But we do pull all those tests in, make sure that they're, that they're accurate and they meet the standards.
How, how many samples do we take across our city for our water per day, per week?
For stormwater?
No, for actual, was this, is, I was thinking more drinking water?
Drinking water, I'm not over that part of it, but I believe that we're at thirty samples a week. I'm an overachiever.
And who, who does that testing for us? We, we don't do it in-house, so do we send it to Fort Worth or some independent lab?
The testing itself, the, the sample collection is done in-house, whether it's Jonathan Reams or I think Jeremy Matthews is his backup, and then they take those samples to Tarrant County.
Tarrant County, T, T, yeah, okay, appreciate it.
Let's see, we also have, we also manage the fatsoils and grease program, which regulates discharges from restaurants, car washes, industrial and commercial facilities. We do water conservation to include watering restrictions, so the, no watering between ten AM and six PM any day. You can only water commercially on Tuesdays and Fridays, and if you're an even address, it's Wednesdays and Saturdays, and odd is Thursdays and Sundays. Get that little plug in.
For our wastewater, when you test it for commercial, who's our, what's our biggest violations we see?
We don't have a lot of actual violations of the parameters that, that they have to meet. When we do, it's usually a minimal violation, which basically means if, if the limit's like two hundred and fifty or two hundred milligrams per liter for oil and grease, they may get a violation of like two twenty, which is still a violation, and then we issue a notice of violation to that industry, and then they have to basically give us what happened, explain to us what happened and what measures that they've taken to eliminate or to, to mitigate that issue.
Thank you.
We also perform commercial inspections and plan of use for both civil and building. We do certificate of occupancy inspections with the building department, and as you can see, we cover a wide variety of programs the city is required to implement, and this isn't even all inclusive as to what we do. The drainage department just took over, I guess it was June of last year, so I'm still new to them. But the drainage system, or the drainage department is responsible for all the drainage system maintenance, which includes cleaning sediment, clearing debris, and graffiti cleanup within the, the drainage system. All this maintenance encompasses about twelve miles of open channels, which are your creeks and ditches, six hundred and forty storm drain inlets, which connect all of the underground drainage system. Street sweeping is done at least once per year, and it actually takes about a month to sweep the entire city. And then we also assist other city departments as needed. An example to that is yesterday, they were helping the water department fix a break, and today they're helping repair a sewer line, so. It's got to get done, so. The city's grown considerably in the past decade, and as such, there are a number of programs that have increases in workload due to state requirements changing. For example, there were a handful of construction sites in two thousand fourteen, which equated to roughly thirty inspections. In comparison, two thousand twenty-two alone saw just over four hundred construction and outfall inspections that are required for our MS four permit. Our cross connection control program has almost doubled the number of backflow assemblies during this time. In our drainage department, the storm drain inlets the crew performs maintenance on is up from three hundred and seventy-five to six hundred and forty with the same number of employees. The, each rain event creates an inspection of certain inlets. There's forty-three inlets that they have to go check every time we have a major storm event, to make sure they're not clogged, make sure they haven't been clogged from debris and, and sediment. The, all the inlets are inspected monthly regardless of we've gotten rain or not. The drainage crew, as I mentioned earlier, maintains the creeks and ditches as well, and while those didn't increase in size, we had our main piece of equipment out of service for almost eight months this past year. Not due to anything with fleet maintenance, it was the manufacturer was waiting on parts. This meant the crew had to manually clean and maintain most of those areas, and to say we're behind would be accurate.
The street sweeper, do we outsource that, or do we actually have one of them?
We have one.
We have one?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but I didn't know if it was ours versus, I've seen it one time.
Yeah, it was, we got that before I started here, I think it was two thousand and five. The, I think it was the beautification committee had helped fund it. So we actually had, about six months ago, a, the representative from Tempco actually came out and did a once-over-over it, and kind of helped our guys go and make sure that they, you know, could help keep it fine-tuned so it would, you know, be good working order. So right here, what we have is the current compensation versus other cities in the DFW area. The environmental manager is in charge of both the environmental and the drainage departments. The pay comparison range only takes into account one department. I was unable to find any other environmental or drainage management position in DFW that had the same responsibilities. For the environmental specialist comparison, most cities have multiple specialists covering the same responsibilities as what R one does. For instance, City of Keller has four environmental specialists plus an environmental manager. Mansfield has six, and then they have two just in stormwater. Both of the drainage positions are at the low end of the comparable range. So what it takes to actually get these positions that, that my department holds, for the environmental manager, you have to have a water or wastewater license, a stormwater license for inspecting construction sites, a cross connection license, program management experience, and stormwater management, pretreatment, cross connection, and then knowledge of just about all federal, state, and local pretreatment, stormwater, cross connection, anything the EPA or the TCQ's dreamed up, you at least have to know where to look. The environmental specialist is required to have at least a water or wastewater license, a cross connection related license, knowledge and experience in pretreatment principles, and basic laboratory testing procedures, including sampling techniques and chain of custody protocols. The senior maintenance and the maintenance worker are both required to have a CDL and traffic control zone certification, which is basically a flagger's course, so they can do traffic control in the streets. And to become a senior maintenance, you have to have at least three years' experience prior to that. The current licenses that are held within the department, we have a surface water license, a distribution license, two wastewater collection licenses, CSI, which is a cross connection license, a BPAT, which is a backflow tester, backflow prevention assembly tester license, and one of the employees is currently getting his irrigator inspector's license as well. Those are TCQ issued licenses, and they're required to be renewed every three years, and most of them take thirty hours of continuing education to renew. The next section is a licenses that are needed for, to be able to complete your, your, your job duties. There's a certified inspector of sediment erosion control, ICC, commercial plumbing inspector license, an ICC residential plumbing inspector license, a pesticide license as well. And then other education and licenses for, basically for the better of the city is certified public manager, a class A CDL with tanker endorsement, class B CDLs, and a traffic control zone. Little information about some of these licenses, some of them can take up to five years to obtain. Water licenses, the soonest you can get a water license is two years with education and experience, and that's on the job. Wastewater is three, two and a half or three years before you can get those licenses. There, currently, there's only one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine wastewater collection three licenses in the state of Texas. We're lucky enough to have five, I believe, on staff. And right now, there are only six hundred and fifty-five CSIC inspectors in the United States. With that, I'll answer any additional questions or anything else.
Mayor, go ahead.
What, what's the biggest...
Back to your water conservation. I have a suggestion. I've found that very few people in the city even know that we have watering restrictions. Did you, did you all know that? You do know that? I was just curious. But so many people don't even know that we have those restrictions, and I think with watering season coming up, maybe get with Pedro, and he could really advertise what those restrictions are, and I'm sure you all don't have the staff to monitor that very effectively either. So it would kind of be a, you know, hope that the residents do follow those restrictions.
Pedro's revamp of the newsletter is, includes an environmental section, and as a standard, the water conservation's going to be in there, I believe, every month, right? Yeah, we, we've spoken with that, and Glenn's worked with him directly to, to make sure that, you know, that our department is, is more out there, so people do know that. It's on the website. Every few months, they, they put it through the ticker, so it's on there, and it's on the environmental page of the city's website as always.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I had a couple. So one is, like your water, you had, you have four resources, and you've had multiple years at those resources, you all haven't had those resources, so what's not getting done? I mean, if we're down four resources, you guys can't be covering it all. I mean, we've got to be, something's got to be not maintenance, something's not to be...
It, it creates burden for those guys because they have to hustle up. I mean, we get everything done, but it's really tough on them, especially when it comes to on-call. The rotation comes around, there's four of them every, you know, it comes around so quick that you, you run the risk of hitting burnout.
Right.
And that's what we don't want to happen.
Yeah, I mean, how much overtime are you, the guys having to work?
We've had, of course, unfortunately, we've had a few main breaks there lately, but we've been fortunate in the last few years. We hadn't had a whole lot of those.
I mean, if, if, if we've been trying to hire people for multiple years and we can't, I mean, we definitely need to do this study then. But don't need no study to figure out, okay, we're trying to hire people, we can't. Evidently, we're not paying the money, because that's the only other factor that, that it could be.
Like, like I was telling you earlier, is, is a lot of these cities are being very, very creative. They're hot, they're, they're offering incentives. They're paying twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars to get people to come, go to work for them. And like Matt said, you know, there's not a tremendous amount of certified operators in the state of Texas, and everybody knows that, so they're at a premium, and...
Well, and that's, that's why, coming from the water background, I actually worked with your wife in Arlington. So I, I have water experience. I have, one of my drainage guys is actually in the middle of a basic water course. That way, you know, that way we can assist our, the water and the sewer guys, and, and even the street department, you know. If, while we're short on, on people, we're not short on people that, that love the city. And so everybody does whatever they can. They're, you know, the, the people at the front, when my phone rings, it may be something for environmental, it may be something for streets, it may be somebody that's just mad because their dog ran away. You know, I mean, it, it just, it just depends on what it is. There, you know, I've, I've some, I've told everybody that works for me that the first time that I hear you say, well, that's not my job, that becomes your job. Because we're all one team, you know, and so in, in order to get the job done, we need to get the job done. So if that means I send my guys to water courses or go to wastewater courses or, or whatever, you know, whatever's needed, then that's what I'm going to do.
So here, here's what concerned me on this one, and we better take this serious, is if we're down multiple people and resources, so, and, you know, people, we're just sucking it up, we're putting our shoulder to the groundstone doing it, and on top of that, they're either at the low end of what the industry will give, or even with water evidently below that, then it, you know, we're going to aggravate the good resources we got, and they're just going to slowly drop off. We're not going to be able to replace them. So that's why I, I feel it's very important that we do this study, find out what we, what do we need to pay. I mean, I understand the industry's tough out there, but we either figure out how to compete in that, or we're going to go out of business.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. And I'm, I'm on thin ice right now, it scares me every day, if, you know, afraid I'm going to walk in, somebody's going to say, I'm done. We're getting very, very thin on certified operators up there, and, you know, I got, I got to, we do, in answer to your question a while ago, we actually do daily chlorangeageal test. And so you can't just send whoever has to do those, those have to be certified operators that are doing those, so. It, it's a scary situation to be in.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions for Matt? Go ahead.
Talking about the drainage, I live on Cement Creek. I have a neighbor behind me that likes to use that creek for disposing of limbs and washing machines and all kinds of other large things, and you guys are great, you know, when I call, you're out there, you know, taking care of things right away, and I certainly appreciate that. One of the things on our work plan, Gabe, is videos to communicate to the city. This might be a great opportunity, you know, about what goes into a storm drain, what does not go into a storm drain, what goes into the creek, what doesn't go into the creek, type of thing, Mary's recommendation. These little short two to three-minute videos would be useful, you know, what's our watering schedule? Because people, for the most part, do not like to read, and even though we put them in all of our newsletters and things, people just don't pay attention to it, but they'll watch videos all day long. And like I said, this is one of the items that we put on the work plan, and I think this is a great place to start.
Well, I can, I can get with Pedro, and we can work on, on getting some type of a plan together in order to, to maybe do some short videos, something that'll, that'll catch somebody's attention.
And, you know, maybe by informing the people, maybe that will lighten some of your workload, not a lot of it, but some of it.
Well, I, I would appreciate that.
I think Pedro told us today, he's going to be meeting with each of us, our departments, we'll bring Matt in for his, his portion of it, and give him some ideas to improve the website, maybe add features like that, so.
Put them on Facebook, and then just archive them onto our website.
Absolutely.
Include how to turn your water off, because so many people have a, a break, we had the freeze, people didn't know how to turn their water off, and it was a mess.
I, I agree.
All right, any other questions for Matt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got one for you. How do we get, how, how do we get this done, this, this evaluation? Do we have to make a motion? Do we just...
Mean a...
...start the game?
A salary study?
Yep.
We would ask Melanie what we need to do and figure out how we're going to pay for it.
How much does a salary study need to cost?
I think the salary study that was started in two thousand sixteen was fifty thousand?
I was gonna say they're usually thirty to fifty.
Yeah. We can, we can bring proposals for you.
All right, Paul, take it away.
All right.
Hey, before you, I know y'all know Paul. Paul's, uh, he's been here for, what, seven years now, Paul?
Yeah, Rick, about four.
He came from City of Ulyss, where he worked for twenty-seven years as a water superintendent.
Same thing, and then just what I am now, just operations manager.
He's got a lot of knowledge. I'll just pass, and I didn't even mention Matt. He's, he's been with us for sixteen years, so...
Way to put a lot of pressure on me now.
[laughing]
But, um, yes, water utilities, I like to talk to you about the water, water utilities department. Um, we do, um, basically, I'll put it on the screen, basic, what we do, part of the water, the distribution part of it, we're gonna do a lot of water main maintenance was, which is the majority of the work they do in there, repairing mains, um, just exercising valves, um, hydrant maintenance. I, you know, the main goal there is to keep water potable for citizens, and to maintain adequate pressure for fire protection, you know, protection of the, the citizens. And we, a lot of, a lot of main breaks, it's, um, this time of year, they're fixing to start, and it seems like it's one or two every week. And, uh, and you'll move it down into water sampling. You know, water sampling is what we have to do, and it's usually some type of sampling every day, whether it's bacteriological sampling, or if it's going, you know, we sample for just residual. We have to make sure there's a residual in the line every day, and we'll check for li- lead and copper, and we'll check for, like, nitrates and nitrites. And, of course, going into meter reading is pretty basic. We read the meters, but what it falls into is customer service, which is your turn-ons, your turn-offs, your re-checks. Uh, you get customer complaints about water smell and quality, and, uh, of course, going into some of the certi- certifications we need, like Matt elabora- elaborated, you know, elaborated on, we, we used to, we need just to have, like, a, a C distribution line to be able to work on these mains legally and stuff like that. But to get in what, you know, everybody's talking about, like, we have, we have four openings right now, and we got a bunch of interviews lined up for next week. And the pool we're having to turn from is basically kids right out of high school. I mean, no experience. And, and when you, you go through the description of what you're gonna be doing, you know, working in this mud and dirt, and, you know, it's a hundred and ten degrees, or it might be twenty degrees outside, and you're standing belly-deep in the water, working on this. And then, you know, sometimes you go, we might have to assist the wastewater at foot of it, and you are actually standing in water with no telling what, human feces, everything else. You know, they have protective gear they can put on, but just the thought of that, and a lot of them will turn right around and go, "I don't think I'd be interested in that," you know, and we lose a lot, a lot of them right away. And like, having anybody with the experience come in at all, uh, when they see the starting salary, they're just going, "Hmm, no, I can't, can't do it that, 'cause, you know, I know how to run backhoes, and, uh, you know, actually run sewer jetters, you know, just larger machinery." And it, it's, it's just, it's so hard to find qualified people to move in. Like, a lot of cities now are just like headhunting, just like Randy said. You know, big bonuses to come, and they're just trying to, they're constantly trying to steal your people away. And even in the water, you know, we've had so much turnover, losing people to other departments, and it's just, you know, they gave them so much more money, it's, it's pretty hard to match, you know, and plus, you know, they've already made up their mind, they're going, so. And going over to the other part, which is gonna, the wastewater collection, which is maintaining water mains, which, same thing, we're in the same boat. We're, we're missing, some of those four employees will work in either distribution or water. And it's the same thing with what they're gonna be working in, and, you know, and they go, "We actually have to get in the manholes, and we actually have to get down there and dig them up when they're broke." And according, when you, when you cut a piece of pipe out, and you gotta splice in a new piece of pipe, you can't stop the flow, you know, it's gotta, or it's gonna back people upstream if you plug the line. So you gotta work with the flow coming out while you're trying to put this piece of pipe on. And it just, a lot of people just, "Yeah, I'm outta there, you know, I ain't doing this." And, um, we do a lot of manhole inspections and repair, which requires getting down into manholes, which is an unsafe situation in itself. You know, you have to use air monitors and stuff before you even get in, and then when you get in, you have to be hooked to a safety retrieval line. Plus, you have a monitor on you, and some cities will make you even wear a, a small Scott air pack, you know, to complete, you know, try to help, you know, from any type of poisonous gas, or the number one thing that's gonna kill you is lack of oxygen, to where you go down in lack of oxygen. You know, when you get down to oxygen, six, seventeen, sixteen percent, I mean, you're, you're out. And, you know, same thing, customer service part of it. You know, we'll help out citizens that have a broken service line, you know, even if we have to take our mini-camera and run their service line to show them that, you know, it's broken, your, your yard. So this will be a, up to y'all to have to do this and repair that. But if we can see that it's out in the street, which still it's kind of, it's years old away, up and including the tap on the main, but as of courtesy of the city, you know, if, if we have to find it, or they gave a plumber money to find it, and they can prove it's in the street, just out of courtesy, we'll dig it up for them, 'cause that's an enormous expense to put on a homeowner. And it's the same thing, it's the turnover, and, uh, and, and then just not enough people overall in this one department, because you could, there's not enough people to be doing mostly the preventative maintenance, the turning of the valves, the exercising the hydrants and the valves, constantly running usually problem sewer lines. We just don't have enough people to compete, you know, doing that. And therein lies the problems of the whole operation. But, and it, you know, it's, it, it boils down to one thing, it's just trying to have people that wanna come into this work. And like you said, I got a call from, uh, the Hollisting Center. Actually, the lady that runs it lives in my neighborhood, and we just know her. She used to be my next-door neighbor, but she moved. And she asked me about working, having people work, and she texts me, and she said she'd have a lot of people interested in coming to work for us and stuff, and I was, sent them on. So, you know, even if they can get in and get their training for a lot of what you were talking about, councilman, um, where they can get their training done while they're at TCJC and stuff like that, when they come out, they still have to have so many years of, you know, work and experience to get these. But it's a start, you know, because it's, it's hard to take these classes, especially when you, you're doing sixty hours of classroom time, when we need you working in the field, but that's about the only way you're able to do it. But, and that's about an overview of what we do. We still have a lot of the same problems everything else, and you're gonna find the same thing from Cory when he talks about the public works. And like I said, it's a crossover. You know, this department has to go help them, his department has to come help us. It's just from a lack of people, and, uh, I'd be happy to field any questions or anything you have on the operation, anything you don't understand.
All right, thank you, Paul. Mary?
I know very little about this subject, so forgive me if I ask a very easy question. Uh, the water meter situation, is that something that individuals have to go read those, or do they electronically feed?
We, uh, we have a radio read system, and we basically, you just have a laptop in there, and an antenna on it, and as you drive down the street, the, the meter's constantly putting out the signal in the air of what the reading is.
Okay.
And interceptions, and total, loads them into the...
So how oft, I mean, I guess you have to do this monthly for every house?
You have to ju- you can drive down the street, and, um, it probably takes to do a cycle, maybe one day at the most.
Okay, so it's not really very, uh, it's not something you could really save a lot of time on.
And that's why this same guy can do a lot of the, he's usually the customer service guy. That goes, does, does the turn-ons, turn-offs, and re-checks, and just, uh, citizens complaints. You know, that a lot of them will have, they just don't know they have a leak in their front yard, and, you know, and they're not, they don't even realize that, you know, it's, that's not city property, that you'll have to fix it, you know, and you even tell them, you know, it's, it's a simple repair. If, if you have a husband or a, a son, or anybody could dig it up, it's usually a, a ten-dollar little clamp piece you can buy at any hardware store to clamp that on there and fix it. You know, you just, you don't have to get a plumber unless you wanna pay two hundred dollars for him to do it, so. But he, he, he helps out a lot with just people, you know, and tell them, "You don't have to go get a plumber to do this."
Right, that's good.
It's really easy if you just stick your garden hose down your line a little bit, it'll usually unplug your own sewer, so you don't have to spend two hundred dollars getting the plumber to do it, you know, if you can do it yourself.
Thank you.
Got the garden hose.
Other questions for Paul?
I have a comment. My neighbor works for City of Fort Worth Water, and, uh, he talked to me, it was about a couple of weeks ago, and he's, he looked at our website, our job postings, and he said, "We are just so underpaid that we're not gonna be able to get people."
Yeah. Yeah, it, 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 it really is, and that, I mean, that's been, that's been everywhere. And like I said, I, I spent a lot of time, and, and twenty-seven years there, and, and about twenty-four of that, I was in supervision. Started out as a supervisor, then superintendent, then a superintendent of all of operat- public works operations, which included, you know, water, animal control, and, and stuff like that. But, and, yeah, it's, uh, and, you know, my director told us, you know, one time, he goes, "If we're gonna lose somebody really good over two hundred dollars a month," he was, "Well, damn, give him two hundred dollars, I'm giving him two twenty-five a month. Let's don't lose good people." 'Cause, I mean, everybody's hunting them just like we are.
Any other questions?
Um, by the way, uh, you know, I've seen several comments on Facebook about what a great job you guys do. So I, when I find those, I try to pass them on to Randy.
Those are very rare, but very appreciated, so...
But, you know, we do appreciate all your hard work, you and all the other departments.
Oh, thank you.
Under public works. Uh, you said you fix about one or two water mains each week. How many hours is committed to each of those breaks or repairs?
A lot of times, they, it used to be, uh, the majority of our water leaks are some, sometime, it's different in every city, you know, but the majorities I've seen in this are actually service line leak, you know, just small little pinholes in these service lines. And twenty-five years ago, you could take a backhoe and scratch a little hole and slap a clamp on there and be done. But now with the onset, onset of, you know, water, wastewater, gas, is what all used to be in the ga- ground. And it's all around five, six feet. And when fiber, communication lines, now they put electrical lines in, and they go, "Where's the utilities?" "It's right here." So they dig down about three feet and throw it on top of it. So it's very few. About the only thing we can do with a backhoe is scrape off a foot or two, and then we have to use our hydro excavator to do, with, cut it with high water pressure, and then vacuum it out with the vector part of it, because, you know, you go to destroying fiber optic lines, and you're looking at hundreds of thousand dollars worth of fines. So it takes probably, you know, I'd say an average of five hours. That's if you can have a full crew. Now, in the middle of the night, when you only have three or four people, you know, it can take eight hours.
Okay. Um, and this was also a question I wanted to ask Matt, but, uh, do y'all have to pay for your own certifications, and about how much do they cost?
No, they don't, we don't pay, you know, it's, it's put in the budget.
Okay.
You know, to do so much training a year. And I, I don't even know, back in the day, when I got my licenses, it was about three hundred dollars, but I would, I would bet it's quite a bit more than that now.
Okay.
The TCP certification, it just, it depends, uh, the biggest cost would be how many classes were required prior to getting that. So, like, the distribution, like, you should require distribution files, uh, water safety class, and whatever class, uh, just to be able to take the test. So that's three classes, each one of those is about four or five.
Good. All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Paul? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you all.
Public services. Corey Smith?
Cory has been, how long has he been in the city? Seventeen years of, of service to the city. Um, all of it in public services. You can't believe that.
All right, so, public services, you know, it's a, it's a, pretty much does everything else that hadn't been talked about. So, um, you know, the asphalt repairs, concrete repairs, um, you know, we try to do the pot-holing, we try to do crack sealing for preventive ma- maintenance. Um, but, you know, we're, we're shorthanded too. Um, asphalt, concrete roads, as well as all the curbs, gutters, sidewalks, complaints, um, trip hazards, all that stuff, we have to take care of. All the new signs, the sign repairs, things that get ran over in the middle of the night, we get called out, we have to put those, uh, temporaries up. Uh, we do the programming for all the school zone lights. We've had some issues with some of them this year. Um, traffic signals, you know, sometimes we can reset them, but sometimes we, we have to call somebody in to, to actually help us with them. Um, you know, uh, we set up the detours, block lanes of traffic, flag road, construction, and, and special events when needed. Uh, when precinct four's here doing work, we had to, we had to do all the road, uh, closures for them. Um, so they just got through redoing Burlington Road, and we had to have three guys there. You have to have a licensed, um, herbicide license to be able to... herbicide license to be able to do that. And right now, I'm the only person who has that license. And so trying to get employees to, uh, get classes and get in and get those, that's, that's going to be a big help. We, uh, sometimes we're out there, we're on our hands and knees, we're having to pull weeds out of the flower beds around these, uh, city facilities. There, you know, and, uh, we do some of the mowing, we do a few mowing. Um, Highland Station has the walking trails. We do all the mowing, weed eating, edging along all those, and that's over a mile, um, just along Condor alone. We do all the sprinkler repair. Um, if we can't get it, we, you know, we do have to do some contracting out, but we try to do it all on our own. The, uh, working special events, we, we're, we're there. All the, the spring cleaning event like this weekend, the Fourth of July, training rain, Christmas parade, those are all mandatory for, for our crew. That's just so we can be successful and we're, we're, you know, supplying our citizens with, with what they need. As long as that, we're also doing, uh, all the concert in the parks where we got to set up and break down the, the stage. We, we are the ones who do the trash for the farmer's market. The holiday season, we're doing the Christmas parade, we're, uh, and we get help, the other departments help us well, but we're, and we, and it's a team effort for the Christmas displays. But we also, bad weather, uh, we're the ones that get called out for blocking high water, we're removing debris that gets, um, that's blocking the roads or sidewalks from the high winds. We're out sanding the streets due to the ice and snow and we're trying to keep the roads safe for all the public. We're constantly assisting other departments. We could be, we're moving furniture from the city hall or the, or shuffling books for the library. We might be shutting down a lane for, uh, the police department or the fire department due to a blown over telephone pole. We're, uh, sometimes, you know, we gotta, we gotta take a ladder to somebody or somebody needs a dolly. You know, sometimes we, we've got, I've got two guys that are certified to put, um, chemicals in the pool because they needed help this last year, so we were putting chemicals in the pool. You know, throwing mosquito dunks anywhere and, and, uh, helping, um, the code enforcement with, uh, high grass from time to time. Uh, our, our building maintenance program is, we, really, it's, it's a one, one guy deal right now. Uh, we got thirteen city facilities. That, he's, he's trying to keep the parking lots somewhat clean and blown off. He's working on all the outdoor lighting, the parking lot lights, uh, working. He puts ice melt in, in, uh, in all the parking lots, uh, and entrances for safety, the citizens. He's, uh, changing the bulbs and ballast, light fixtures, plugs, changing ceiling fans, uh, ceiling tiles, basic plumbing of toilets and urinals, faucets, showers, sinks, garbage disposals, those are just daily tasks. Adjustments of doors, locks, and some knowledge of, uh, basic AC units is, is a, is a plus. We're just trying to keep it where we're not constantly having to call contractors out. On Mondays, we're at the, uh, community center, inspecting it from the weekend rentals to keep everybody, uh, satisfied. Meetings, uh, with contractors, with electricians, AC guys, plumbers, that's a, an everyday thing, really. This department is often called off of their, their jobs and duties to go help somebody else or another priority has come up that is more important for the day. Now, these, uh, the biggest thing is when this, when this, uh, department's fully staffed, we only have six employees and we have two openings right now. Since 2018, we have lost thirteen employees. You know, we've lost four to, uh, different cities. We've lost, uh, a couple to retirements. We had one death. And then here lately, uh, our crew leader left us to go to precinct four. So. And Parks, Parks is over a hundred acres of developed parkland, just like what Randy was saying. Um, we only have two employees in that department and one of them, he has the most building maintenance experience, so he's the one who does most of the building maintenance in the city, so that takes him out of the parks. He, uh, he still does parks, um, stuff to, to help us out, but his main thing right now is building maintenance, because there's so much to do every day. You know, the parks is, 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 uh, enjoyed by many, many people. So keeping the parks clean, the restrooms clean, that's multiple trash cans, considering, you know, we have uh, forty-five picnic tables, picnic areas, there's five restrooms, four dog parks, and it's, it's a, it's a lot. When, when doing the trash and everything else, they're, they're also, uh, picking up trash around the city facilities, uh, including all the trash cans around, uh, the rec center and the pool. Pavilions, uh, we're having to heat, these guys are constantly removing balloons, streamers, tape, chalk, anything to keep the picnic areas clean. There's power washing with these picnic tables and these pavilions, uh, as long as the restrooms and, uh, keeping the restroom stocked with supplies. Uh, sometimes there is some painting we have to do around there. Uh, the dog parks and the dog stations are a, uh, big necessity. Uh, they get used a lot. And right now, emptying all the trash in the dog parks as, as well as the dog stations, um, inspecting for, uh, damaged equipment, loose fences and water fountains to keep these, uh, puppies happy and safe. We're, uh, trying to keep these, uh, stations full of bags. Uh, and especially when the weather's nice, like it's starting to get to, these things gotta be checked every other day, if not every day, because we start getting the phone calls and the complaints. And these walking trails in Highland Station are a part of this. Landscaping, just like, just like in public services, you know, there's, uh, fallen limbs, trees, bushes, mowing, you know, whenever, whenever the mowing contractors can't keep up, Parks and Public Services jump out there and knock it down. You know, there's a treating of ants around the pavilions and playgrounds. This has to be done by a licensed applica- uh, applicator by state law as well. Uh, sprinkler repair, the small parks are the only parks we have that are irrigated, so, we stay busy, keep, trying to keep those nice and green. The playgrounds, we gotta inspect those. Keep, uh, you know, the, make sure there's no missing or loose bolts, unsafe swing sets, sharp plastic. You know, the, the employees are also looking for graffiti when they're doing this. We, you know, something could get written or, you know, something bad carved in there and we gotta take care of that. Uh, the ball field is a, is another chore. Mowing and prepping, um, before the games for, uh, the rec leagues. This includes required maintenance, uh, around the home plate, the pitcher's mound, keeping the dugouts clean after rainstorms, um, dirt and sand that get built up in these dugouts, they gotta be shoveled out. Trash, weeds, all that has to be removed from, uh, the fence lines and, uh, the, the actual dugouts. Parks also has plumbing and electrical issues that we, they, they do, uh, basic skills. You know, changing out lights in the restrooms, working on the pathway lights, maybe a bad plug for Christmas lights or, or just a few of the things. Plumbing consists of dog park fountains and water fountains. And these dog park fountains, you know, we get a lot of complaints about those, but it's the pet hair gets in there and clogs them up. We gotta take it all apart to get it cleaned. And, um, then you have kids who are pushing rocks and dirt and just the other water fountains, so those have to be, uh, taken apart. You know, th- these guys gotta know what they're doing. And they, they do the assisting of the other departments as well. They, uh, you know, um, right now, public service being shorthanded, one, one of, the, the only park guy really left in the parks this year, or, or right now, he had to help with the traffic control on Burlington Road, because we didn't have enough guys. And he also helps the other park, um, employee with, uh, some of the building maintenance projects when he's needing an extra hand or two. And Parks is a part of the special events, like the concert in the park, they help and they stay at night. And they, they're the ones that are helping, just like water and drainage with, uh, Christmas decorations. The one thing is, is that both these, both of these departments, uh, herbicide and pesticide license are, are needed. That way, we're, we're taking care of all the ants, wasps, anything around facilities, sticker patches and around the playgrounds. And traffic control certified, uh, will help teach all these guys the basic needs for our, um, our set, our safety for, uh, traffic control. And really, that's all I got. So.
Questions for Corey? Captain Recuplin?
Is that facing?
Oh, Nikki, hold on, slow down. I'm calling you. Mary first.
First of all, I am physically exhausted. Just from listening to this.
Yes.
Now, the ones who left to go to other cities, I can think of several reasons, obviously, maybe a higher salary.
Yes.
Maybe they wouldn't be so overworked. Maybe they live closer to that city? Did any of them really specify the reasons?
Uh, most, most of them all left. We're going to other cities and precinct four was described to me as, more money and better opportunity for their future.
Nikki? Other questions for Corey? Yeah. Finney, please.
I've heard this complaint several times before, but, um, facility rentals, people come in and they don't ever clean up. So at that point in time, do we withhold their deposit?
That, I do not know.
I don't expect you to know that answer.
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay. And then what?
They have a list, they're blacklisted that they're, they're not allowed to rent again.
Okay. And do we charge these, uh, sport associations for the use of the fields? I mean, these guys do an incredible amount of work.
Yeah, I believe.
Again, that's not a you question, but.
The, the adult softball field are, um, we do charge, uh, teams to participate. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I want to say it's like three, three twenty-five or three fifty uh, for, for per team, per league, uh, but we, we manage those leagues ourselves. The youth leagues don't participate on that field, only at the soccer field, and I think that's, we don't charge them.
But again, if we're doing maintenance, I mean, these guys charge the kids to participate, they should be paying us something, I would think, to use our fields. If, especially if they're outside the city.
The kids aren't using that, a soft, adult softball field, just the adults.
Y'all just do softball fields?
Yes, yes, yeah, just, just the one there in Willow Creek Park.
Okay. But again, I mean, there's still work that has to be done. We're paying other contractors to do work on these other fields, so might be something to consider.
Soccer fields aren't real nice and we get a lot of complaints about the quality of the dirt and everything else out there.
Well, again, if they paid a little bit toward it, we could fix it up a little better.
We've talked to those leagues about it, they don't have a lot of, a lot of extra cash, so.
Mayor, they, they don't even actually have a current contract. They haven't come back for renewal.
Okay.
Uh, they owe six hundred and, over six hundred dollars in water bill.
Yeah, that was last summer.
Unpaid water bill.
Okay.
So, and all we get are complaints out of it, so, I mean, I recommended that we just, if they want to go use those fields, open space, use them, but no way are we advertising those as game fields. And I don't, you know, it's a hundred bucks is all the city's getting out of it and the complaints to go with it, so.
I've heard nothing from them about wanting to renew. I, they haven't said a word to me.
No, those, that area was not designed to be a soccer field anyhow. We just did it out of the kindness of our heart, right? So we converted it, isn't that right?
Yes.
And I, I would like to point out too, that, you know, it's hard, this department's really hard to maintain employees. In fact, Mr. Little back row, the back row stalked his entire department poaching my, my guys. I mean, every one of his guys had come from public works, and they're good ones too. And I don't blame them, you know, those are the lowest paid guys that we have and, and it's hard for those guys to be able to, to raise a family, especially at the salaries they're making, and then what really affects them, where they're at, is, is when we do have insurance increases and, and man, it kills them. So mainly, you're, the guys you have doing those, at those positions are, are single, still probably living at home, still on mom and dad's insurance, uh, those kind of folks, so. It's, it's a hard, hard to maintain a good, good set of employees down there than have guys like him poaching the good one.
They're looking at more pay.
That's right.
Looking at more opportunity. Well, if y'all want to lose some money, that's what I want to be talking about.
Keep them in the, keep them in the city, that's a good thing. We want to keep it.
They didn't leave the city, they just left me.
Alright, other que- other questions for Corey? Hey, thanks, sir.
Alright, yes, I appreciate it.
Randy, anything else you want to wrap up on, buddy?
Yeah, I will answer one more, I think there was a question earlier and I have, uh, Melly gave it to me. We, since 2019, we've lost six, six licensed, uh, water employees, um, either to retirement or to the private sector and one to the Eagle Mountain Saginaw School District. So which leaves us with, currently with five licensed, uh, operators. Three being in the, in the field and myself and Glenn Reeves. Not in the field. So, that's where we're at.
Well, guys, a great, great summary. It's really good to highlight all the stuff y'all do. Proud of y'all and glad you could brag about your departments a little bit and, uh, show us all the stuff you've done, the licenses, everything, that, uh, it's good information for the council as we. And also I appreciate the, uh, the gentle prodding about the new positions and, uh, but especially, uh, finances, so we will definitely take that under advisement.
Mayor, if I could follow up real quick on a question that, uh, Councilmember Beacore asked about charging. The other thing that we do, um, charge for is we have people that rent our adult softball field, because we, we play games on Tuesday nights and we play on Friday nights. Uh, the other nights, the other three nights of the week, we do rent it out to people that, whether it's a team, you know, who just wants to practice for an hour. And sometimes that is a youth team, uh, but a lot of times it is our own adult softball teams that just want to, um, play. But we do charge them for that, we charge them for the lights also.
Alright, if that's all we got, I think we're done with item number twelve. Great job, folks. Item twelve, that was eleven. Item twelve, executive assessment is reportedly not, uh, required, receiving no new information, so.
I have a second.
All second? All, or, I guess we go, all in favor, in hand? At eight oh seven, we're gone. Thank y'all.